I'll call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It is 6:02. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Alright, I guess we'll start with introductions. Joseph Baker.
Jennifer Gill.
Richard Remmels.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
And live on television.
Andrew S.
Ah, alright. Okay, moving along here. New business. We have Mr. Kevin Del Gizi here on a Bannigan School Park update. Come on down, sir. We have the next contestant.
Doing like a little McConaughey? Alright, alright, alright.
Lincoln Lawyer. Awesome. Always been a Lincoln man.
Crazy, crazy. Alright, yes, I just wanted to give you guys a little update on the Bannigan School Park. I want to start off, I want to make sure I not forget a lot of people here who helped make this update to this park successful. I just want to start off by thanking actually Sergeant Licava, believe it or not. Good friend of mine who kind of pointed this in this direction. I walked the park one day when I was kind of doing my rounds. And just basically said, hey, look at what are we doing with this particular area? Is there anything we can do to maybe put something else in there? And I was like, wow. And he kind of just sparked the idea, right? Which is great. We started to go forward and Rich helped me out with coordination from Grafton, which is awesome, you know? That's just great stuff. And just started to go get the ball rolling with that team over in Grafton. Adam La Ponte and Cody Hurd are the gentlemen over there that run the program over there. And super supportive through this whole thing. Really cool about everything that we had to do over there to get some free equipment from them. The biggest piece honestly is Peter Ryan and his team over there. I mean, he's the boots on the ground for the whole project. I mean, he did, he did all the work. Him and another gentleman Brendan Harper.
Oh yeah.
And I don't know, I don't know anybody else who he had over there. I just know those two gentlemen.
So I was there today, there was Raymond Schabbs and Connor McKay.
And those guys worked for the department as well?
Yes. Hard time, yeah.
That's great. They were there, they helped, they contributed, that's awesome. Very thankful for that.
And I was there just after 10 o'clock this morning. Looks beautiful up there.
I was there just before you.
Yeah, I was.
I was telling them to shovel harder.
Absolutely beautiful looking up there.
Mr. Scungio from Dig Construction. He donated time, equipment for the entire project. Helped us move the swing sets over from Grafton. Helped install it with the guys. Just with the heavy equipment and everything, just huge help for that with the guys to help me do that. Helped the team do that. Brian Malali, Malali Materials supplied me with the mulch. Gave me a better than average price to help out with the town project. And I can always rely on him for things like that. Let's see, who else do I have on my list? Actually, Selectmen Baker for actually taking pictures for me today, putting them on Facebook. Better pictures than I had put up on Facebook. I'm gonna need you to hire this guy for my video advisor.
I can't take credit for the pictures.
Yeah, for sure.
Visual photographer.
That's awesome. What else? Couple gentlemen at the Grafton Highway Department, Kevin Gallagher. And actually my cousin Brian Lamontain who works, who actually lives on the street over there on Ferry Street. Kind of helped do some communication and coordinating, which was just awesome. And then in the end of us, we talked about Cody Hurd asked us a request if we could dedicate something to his mom. He grew up in this town. I knew his mother and father and she'd recently passed. And she was a volunteer for this kids sports program for a couple of years. Nice lady, always about the kids. She just had that right attitude. He asked if we could dedicate a park bench at that park in her, in memory of her name. I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea.
I think we did the install today, right?
Yeah, the bench is in. He's supposed to give me a call when the plaque comes in. We'll do a dedication, you know? Get the newspaper down there, we'll take pictures, whatever we need to do. And I'll work with him to get that done.
So my question, and I've already asked it, but you have a soft opening, a hard opening? What do you think?
It's really already happened and I think the kids across the street are already playing. Oh yeah.
Nice.
You know what I mean? I'm not fencing that off if they...
No, no, it makes sense.
I'd gotten a text on an email or on Facebook or whatever it was in, from, I think it's his mother. Just saying that there's an excited little boy across the street looks out the window all the time, waiting for this thing to be finished, so.
Oh, that's awesome.
That's all I need, that's great. That's awesome stuff. So that's what I have with that. I think that's, this is great, just another addition to places where people can recreate and kids can have fun, right? The other thing I wanted to mention, and I don't know if it's mentioned because I'm just not really thinking about it, but the police department, the library and the senior center and all the folks that contributed, including yourself and your daughter, for the Halloween party that we threw at the, in those three locations a couple of weeks ago, it was just amazing. I mean, I attended that. It was awesome, right?
Yeah, there was a lot of kids.
There was a lot of kids there, a lot of candy passed out, a lot of sugar going around. The police department passed out pumpkins.
Representative Soder was there.
Yeah, Representative Soder was there, thank you. What was the other thing? The fire department, the ambulance they were over there with the guys passing out candy. So a lot going on that day. And it's just, it's a huge contribution to the town to get back like that and see everybody enjoy themselves, especially the kids, right? So, had a lot of fun that day and I just want to say thank you to those gentlemen and ladies who ran that function. It just, it was great, really great. And I have an easy job, I keep telling you guys that. I have the easiest job in town right now, so. Doing what I do, you know? All positive. And I really enjoy it. Any questions?
Well, elections are in April, if you would like a hard job.
Oh yeah, is that what it is? If I want a difficult job? That's great. I'll think about that and I'll get back to you.
There are folks that are very forgiving here. They really appreciate it.
Hundred percent. So, thank you very much for that.
Well, if I could just say, I did go to that.
I just have one question. Sorry. So, like, I know, like, you were talking about not putting fencing in, but is there any, like, regulations we have to follow with that? Like, for legal reasons or anything? I just want to make sure that if a kid falls, that, you know, we don't have any issues.
To put a fence up at the park at Bannigan? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah? To my knowledge, there isn't any ruling about putting fencing up. It was already an established park, park area, whatever. I just added equipment into it. I put mulch down, more than enough mulch, I think, under the actual swing set, more than required. Call it bouncy or whatever you want to call it, but there's cushion on the swing if somebody, kid falls over or something like that. Peter Ryan and I actually talked about that as we did the install. We thought that would be better to put more in and around where the kids play and then just kind of feather it out on the outer surface, on the outer sections of it, so. That's what we did.
Alright, that sounds great.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
No problem. Thanks guys. Thank you.
Thirteen Lincoln Street.
So, almost closed, but you know what? Almost only counts in horseshoes, hand grenades and nuclear war. The closing documents have all been submitted to the Registry of Deeds, including a typical drawing that our legal counsel has submitted to the Registry of Deeds and all other closings in his career. But apparently the Registry of Deeds wants a full-blown Mylar drawing. So that effort is still underway before it's officially closed and money gets in the bank. But nonetheless, you see the closing documents in there. And just to remind folks, we're receiving $35,000 for the parcel of 7,000 square feet. We're receiving $2,500 bucks to cover the outstanding license fees for the prior months. And we're receiving $2,500 bucks to cover closing costs. So, it's a $40,000 check coming to the town. Once the closing is fully effective. And counsel has been working on that.
Can we dedicate that septic to you?
The septic, whatever, yeah. Yeah, sure, you can put my name all over it. Something head, I think is what you would put there, right?
Well, write it right in dirt.
No, I think they are looking to do a separate septic and well set up for the two buildings, but I don't know that for 100%.
Excellent. Moving along. Acceptance of Drainage Easement 96 Ironstone. Do you want to dive in?
Yeah, so I think we're not quite ready. You can describe it, but what...
Generically, yeah. You don't like the drawing.
The drawing's no good. I sent it to counsel and so we need something better that actually has, and maybe the digs people...
So let me ask you this. Can we print out the GIS mapping from the software?
Maybe.
And then can we have them doodle it in from there?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, if that's something you can figure out.
Do you have a way to print it here and then give it to Peter?
I don't know that, so we'll see what we can find out.
It's on the website, right?
The GIS map, yes.
Right, so if you print out that parcel, you'll probably catch the road and whatnot?
Yeah, and he can just put the dim dimensions in of where it's gonna go. That may be suitable, yeah.
So, high level, this is pertaining to that, I guess, point of friction with ironstone and the drainage in that house. And so we have a resident who has offered us an easement and right now it's no cost. So, the neighborhood would really like to see the drainage here improved. And so rather than having it go into a junction block and feeding into two pipes into some sort of a, like a French drain, we're going to be putting in, I think Peter said about, not you, but Peter Ryan, about 300 feet of piping with a 90-degree culvert and this easement, which will allow us to drain off that water. And that should fix any puddling that we have on that street. Bringing this to a close, essentially.
That's great. Amazing.
Chapter 90 will cover the work?
I don't know, I'm gonna request it.
Okay.
I'm definitely gonna put the project in.
Yes.
I think we have to do it either way because it would satisfy and bring that other issue to a close.
Who are you putting for capital spend as well?
Yeah.
Over $200,000 in that account. And how much do you have an estimate on the cost?
I think this is about, what, $7,000, $8,000? For the actual drainage?
I don't know, the number I thought I heard was closer to 18.
Okay, closer to 18 now?
Yeah.
Okay, so 80 was the original number.
Okay, maybe that's what it is, maybe I'm confusing.
No, it's been fine tuned and the current in-house contractor thinks they can get it done.
Done for X.
Within the chapter, you know, procurement requirements.
Oh yes, okay, so maybe it is AK, so it's under the...
Right, under the threshold of having to go to bid.
Right, right, okay.
So, they feel they can get this done.
Okay.
So, that would, yeah, that would close that.
Amazing.
And I think three other drains have been done. You've seen a post on Facebook, some residents are very happy. You know, we've been fixing them in-house, so.
So I think tonight, you could, you could probably vote to authorize Richard to sign because it only requires one signature notarized for the easement, subject to the proper acceptable form of a drawing, which is in process.
And so this is the language here.
That's it, right there.
This would get filed with the Land Corps, right?
That's correct.
So you just need a picture on top of this and...
A drawing to go with.
So, the only thing is, are you taking Andrew off of here or does it matter?
He put that in the draft. So, yeah, he didn't update that. We'll fix it. So we're gonna fix, you know, the text. And then that text will be what you would sign in front of a notary, which the town clerk serves as, okay?
Okay.
And if the board wants to vote to accept the easement and authorize Richard to sign it on the board's behalf, that's all that's needed and then we'll get the drawing, you know, the drawing needs to be...
So I am, I am in favor of this, so do we, you want me to make the motion? You want to make a motion?
I was gonna make a motion, if that's okay?
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the drainage easement documentation with the upcoming changes of a drawing and other legal updates and that we authorize Richard Remmels to sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Second, we'll take a vote.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I, Rachel?
Aye.
Alright.
Great, super.
I think that is the right way to go.
I do too.
Do we want to dive right into the budget?
Your call.
Or do you, yeah?
Yeah.
I just had some comments on the letter that was sent, I was wondering...
It's not sent, it's a draft, so, right?
I have some comments on the draft letter. Because we had done that, I had done that table with some like, just ballpark increases. So I'm hoping to put something in there around like, here is a, you know, here's potentially what the budget will look like with, you know, modest increases. And say, you know, this is an estimate and has not come back from any departments, but we're...
And you're talking about this right here.
Yeah, we're hoping to see something that, you know, as close to that as possible. And then we should also state that the estimated deficit, even with these extremely modest increases, is already over $200,000. So anything more than what is on that chart, on that table, puts the, you know, it just makes the deficit grow more and more and more. So I don't know how, if you want to put language at the top, like, here's a draft for consideration for department budgets. Please be aware that even at these modest increases, the deficit is already over $200,000.
So, are you suggesting using this document as an attachment and saying, here's, you know, what the board has put forth as consideration at this stage?
Yeah.
You know, because versus doing the model?
Yeah.
We're not ready for that yet, you know what I mean?
If everyone else is comfortable with that, I just, because I think people need to see like, I mean, there's teeny tiny increases and we're already in deficit.
Yeah, right.
And then, and $200,000. And that's with those teeny tiny increases. So, especially for, you know, I don't mean to pick on the school, but they all, they don't really, the last couple of years, they have not come in anywhere near guidance.
Right.
And the primary driver for this deficit. And then you have members of the school committee speaking out against an override, but they still want their budget. So, those two things don't align.
So I can add wording and bring it back to you for the next meeting for finalization. And that will allow also, finance committee may have met or will meet simultaneous with you.
Can we invite them?
I share this, yeah, I share this draft with Claudette as well as the year-to-date numbers. And two of the numbers that are still outstanding in terms of the guidance, in addition to referencing the document that you're, we're talking about, is the percentage increases.
Yes.
And I think you should hope to finalize what to actually put for numbers there at your next meeting. So, look at this as a, this is the first step of the process to get to a guidance letter, which is normally, in the past, has gone out in January. So we're looking to get this out this month, right?
Yeah, hopefully by December 1st, I really, so people can have more time to take a harder look at their budgets because we're in kind of a, I mean, I don't want to say dire, because we do have some stabilization we can use, but that's going to run out at some point.
Right.
And then it will be dire.
And we don't know yet on free cash, that is very close to being put in.
Yay!
It's been reviewed, needs some work, but it's very close from what I understand. I can't say what the number might be, okay?
Yes, I know you hold that close to your vest and that's a...
And I don't have it.
And that's a wise move.
They don't give it out.
It's wise.
But, but this states, we don't want to use free cash, it's not recommended to use free cash anyway.
It's not recommended to use free cash, it's not recommended to use stabilization. You're supposed to be able to pay this out of your operating budget every single year.
But, but I think, as we recall from the effort to do an override last year, the plan B was maybe eking out another year, like this year's budget that we did last year and maybe this upcoming budget, having to use those funds before more desperate measures. But also trimming down along the way, right? To reduce the deficit that has to be dealt with. And we saw some of that last year in the budget effort. And this year with what Jen's providing, you know, this sort of thing, is a further effort towards that. I don't know.
I mean, I think ideally we really need to level fund.
Yes.
But, and then, because even with the increase, I think if we level fund, we still have a deficit.
That's right.
And I...
Because we built those in over the years.
Do we have anything else for budget?
No, so you have year-to-date information in there to look at, you know, to see things for payrolls, tracking based on timeframe of the year, about 31% is what you would expect to see. And 33% for other things, because we have four months of data in there. We have not quite four months of payroll in there. And then there are things that are paid more upfront, like, you know, we got half of the BVT paid in there. We got all of the pension paid in there. We got big piece of the debt service paid in there. Those things are explainable, so that's what's in there.
Rachel, Joseph?
Yeah. So like, I took a good glance at the ledgers and I assume the police chief and fire chief aren't here tonight?
No, it's empty.
Okay. Barring that stuff, the, I was just wondering if I could ask you, Remmels, as like, as highway surveyor?
Sure.
Some questions?
Sure.
So I was looking at the payroll from the past couple of months and I saw that there was like an overall increase in like total payroll. And I know you went from four members to five members. But, like, I was just wondering, why is there like overtime being done and time and a half?
That's a great question and that's something that I know I mentioned probably almost a year ago. So payroll here is kind of fragmented and it seems like department heads tend to interpret the payroll laws a little bit differently. Prior folks would pull from different buckets and pay straight wages whether it was over 80 or not. The staff here, 80 hours, I mean bi-weekly, so it's, because we're paid every two weeks. The folks should be getting time and a half after 80 and not different straight wages out of different expenditure buckets. My understanding of the law is that the town of Millville is one entity and it's one employer. Everybody should be paid consistently with the same rules. So, the staff we have with a pretty consistent schedule, but due to weather events and some police directives, they've had to go out, whether it be accidents or telephone poles down or trees. We've had some pretty nasty windstorms recently. Just this past week, we had Old Chestnut Hill Road without power for a good solid day. A couple poles fell over in the wind. And then, of course, here at the town hall, I think another week or so ago, Peter, we had a tree come down and do damage here and take... So, there's been some need to have the staff come out a bit more than they need. The other thing is, is we, the additional staff that we have, we have a couple interim and we have some small projects that we're catching up on. We're bringing some things from vendors back in-house. And we're doing them here because it's cheaper to pay people as special municipal employees than it is to hire vendors and equipment. For example, the landfill, so we recently just cut the landfill while they were on shift work at no additional cost to town. And that traditionally, and Peter, what was that expenditure for mowing landfill?
So that would have been border health, landfill maintenance, you know, it's a border health budget.
Right. And so whatever that line item, you know, we've now saved because highway's done that work. I know that in prior years, we would pay roughly $30,000 in mowing services. We now have the equipment that we've bought from another municipality to do that here. We've opted to do a rental piece of equipment for salt operations and sidewalks. That'll further reduce our vendor expenditures for two different, two different topics, you know, further. So, we're trying to bring some things back in-house rather than relying on vendors to do all of the work. We now have a street sweeper. We did buy, the street sweeper is about $60,000 a year. There's only 25 miles of roadway here, it's very expensive. It's supposed to be done twice a year by law. We got a great deal on a used street sweeper that's functioning, was a backup machine. We paid $1,200. And we're trying to get a local school to go through some preventative maintenance and help us change the fluids and things like that, maybe a little paint. And we'll put it in the service to the town. If we get a couple of years out of it, great. We're, it's kind of a win-win. Because I don't know if I answered your question, but we're trying to shift some things back into in-house and the labor line's going to go up. And the idea is the expenditure buckets that we use to pay the vendors should come down to offset the costs.
Yeah. So, what was the main reason for hiring another guy? Because you went from four to five individuals. And I see here that, like, I don't exactly know, obviously, but you then had $90 for the payroll, like as an individual payroll, so is that the new guy? And is he working less hours than everybody? Is that the case?
So they're not full-time. The two additional people there, there's three part-time people. There's one individual that is kind of in his retirement stage, he's almost on his way out the door, he comes in here and there. We have a college student that cut grass throughout the summer for us. He's been coming in like one day a week and kind of helping out. And then we have another individual that's been on call. I know, and you're not here to see, but like, he painted all of the crosswalks, the, you know, the lettering on the streets, all the asphalt. That got done over the last few months. There was some weed whacking and cleaning up around, we did the school, the school was kind of a big project. Before we got that open, we did just, like I said, sidewalks around town, especially in front of the church. There hasn't been much mowing and stuff there done, so, you know, we took that upon ourselves to kind of clean that up. It's been a lot of, a lot of smaller things that need to get done. The other thing is, is we had, I think, at least four culverts that hadn't been, hadn't been cleaned and they were either, had root balls in them, they were plugged, they were collapsing. And, you know, Peter Ryan is a crackerjack with fixing those things. He loves cutting the road open and getting right in there, so we had a couple of folks that were helping that out. So, again, I don't know if I answered your questions, but I mean, we're trying to get some projects done here. As you know, with the weather changes, that torrential rain that comes in, it's been a big pet peeve of mine, a big project. We're trying to fix them as quickly as possible before stormwater backs up and the roads flood, so.
So, do you see that the bi-weekly payroll will continue to increase? Because barring the, the furthest out date, which was all the way in, I believe, August, listed here, barring that, that only hit four individuals, you went from around 530 to four, uh, excuse me, 5,300 about, as the bi-weekly payroll, to around 5,450? And so I was just wondering if you are foreseeing any increase of that?
Well, I think the trend will be to plant the expenses in the payroll line, but again, you'll see a reduction in the other expenditure buckets related to vendor services. We'll be doing fall cleanups here. We're, well, we're pretty well done with the park. You know, Bennigan Park, that was, that was something that the highway took on. We'll be doing fall cleanups, leaves and things of that nature. And then we should have a quiet time before, hopefully it snows. Hopefully it doesn't snow at all, but then you'll be seeing these individuals in snow removal equipment, sidewalks, salt operations, and actually plow on the roads. So, that'll be categorized into the salt and ice deficit, you know, bucket. But, again, the payroll, you know, may go up, depends on how many storms we go. If we have a quiet winter, then payroll will taper off, but, you know, it should quiet down, Rachel, but you don't know, it's hard.
Yeah. I get that. And my last question was just, since we're obviously putting this work that would typically be outsourced into, for highway? They're going to be reaching the hours more quickly, basically? And so then they'll get overtime and then time and a half too. So is there any concern over that with just basically, like, I'm not saying like I don't like, I'm not saying like I don't want to pay people more, but um, we do have to consider the budget and stuff like that.
It's cheaper to pay a town employee overtime than it is to pay a vendor for services. So, um, we're trying to, we're trying to recruit and we're hoping that maybe, you know, fire department will, will pitch in when we have um, some snow. I know police have reached out and inquired, um, but again, they have contract issues to kind of go through. Um, payroll may go up. I mean, it depends on the needs of the town. But again, that's going to be less vendor services that we're relying on. So, it's, uh, it's, it's a lot of money. I mean, that loader that we were using um, last year, that was thirty thousand dollars. That was a hundred and sixty-two dollars an hour. Um, you know, now we've got a piece of rental machinery that uh, we can do salt operations in the sidewalk. Um, we, that's a fraction of the cost and we'll just be paying straight time for the person to operate it, so. Then if it doesn't, like I said, if it doesn't snow, we have no, no salt and no ice and then it's great, we'll have savings, but it's unpredictable.
Yeah. And then just, sorry, one final thing uh, for this. And I've heard and I don't want it exactly confirmed, uh, but clearing up would be great. Um, that Peter Ryan's uh, doing the payroll. I just want to make sure that you are doing the payroll as the lead of the department, right?
Well, I am. I'm signing off on the payroll. Um, there is additional payroll that he can do because he is tree warden.
Mm-hmm.
But him and I, we may go over the payroll. He um, he turns in the timesheets to me. Um, but again, it's my signature that's on them, so.
Yeah.
I'm here on, I'm here on.
Concern I've heard about it and then I just want that cleared up.
There, there, there's always rumors and especially if you're tapping into the same circle um, of troublemakers here in town that like to
Stir the pot.
Stir the pot and hang out at the bar.
And, and I review those payroll warrants and I make sure department heads sign off on their departments and.
Typically, I beat Peter. Yeah, typically I beat Peter to the office. Like this morning, I was in here at eight AM, so.
Yeah.
He was flirting with the ladies there, yeah.
Yes. And then Peter followed me in, Peter Ryan followed me in about eight fifteen or so and uh, I was showing him tree warden payroll.
Yeah. Sorry, I, I'm not like trying to target the highway department. If the police admire you too, I'd also ask a bunch of questions, but um.
No, it's fine. You know, there's um, there, there's folks in town, because they're not actively involved or know people that are actively involved um, in the inner workings, they may speculate and create stories and um.
That are not based in fact.
I have no interest in communicating. You, you, you won't catch me in the local bars, so.
Yeah, not going to catch me there either. Uh, but no, but like my, um, I was just initially flagging some
Sure.
Departments just because of the um, expenditure over the ledger I was looking at, so.
I will tell you this, there was a lot of work to, to be done. Um, you know, this past spring, we had to jet a lot of the, the drains. They haven't been cleaned in like seven years. We had to have a vendor come in. There's, when you have root balls for trees in the drains, you know, there's, there's cause for concern. Um, and trying to get into some sort of operational readiness, um, where before we weren't capable of doing anything. It's um, it's kind of a hurdle. And at the same time, it, it is kind of exciting to see the thing, like the whole department, like turn right around. I mean, everybody's happy. They're, they're all productive. They're doing this. Everybody jokes. The inside joke is they're making Millville great again. But everybody's, everybody's working. They're doing something uh, fun and um, but yeah, I don't, I don't know if that answers your question. Um, we're not trying to add expenses, but we're trying to bring all those vendor services back in-house. So.
Yeah.
And Rachel, I guess the only thing I'd share and I tell this to people all the time who comment on Facebook or wherever they comment, we have public forum at every single meeting. So whoever has these concerns, they're more than welcome to come forward and speak in a meeting. They will say speaking on social media or speaking wherever. It's like, that's really not the right forum. And you know, sometimes I'll answer questions on there, sometimes I won't. Same thing for Richard, same thing for Joseph. I don't know. I, Rachel, if you're on social media, I haven't seen you.
No.
See, you're a genius. You're a very, I know. Genius move, genius move.
It's not worth it.
It's not.
No.
So, but we have public forum in every single meeting and come to public forum. You can ask us questions. It's not a hostile environment.
I probably put in a good four hours or so a day, just in admin work. Um, and sometimes more, uh, the phone calls, um.
Complaints.
No, not even complaints, concerns, folks that want issues addressed.
Better understanding of things.
Yeah, and then, you know, our customer base, you know, reaching out to the state, um, interacting with the feds, asking questions, solving problems. And it's um, you know, it can be, it can be challenging. There's, there's, there's a lot to it. Um, so. Hopefully by next spring, you'll see a big difference and you, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to clean things up and save some money, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I did see a difference in those drain on Thayer and Orchard and it used to get way out to like the middle of the street. It still was like around it, but it wasn't like before.
Yeah, they're draining better. I mean, Peter's been opening them up and, and cutting them open.
Yeah.
And I could speak for Preston Street because that drains right across the street from my house and looks great now.
Yeah.
You know.
Doing its job.
We fixed the Ironstone one and then the other thing is, we've been working with Sarah, um, and we have some specs. We want to get some paving done. Um, we have some vendors that are interested in soliciting bids and we've got some streets earmarked, but we were trying to get some help, so.
Nice.
We're working with Sarah to, to get um, some sort of a document so we can get it published.
Great.
Great.
We are doing that. Are you going to come back and plow with us?
Yes, you'll see me um, around Christmas.
Excellent. All right. Um, so I guess moving on, um, you have a memo here. Do you want to talk about this?
No, just uh, just a good read for you, just to help understand in terms of the budget challenges. MMA did this, put this together and it makes for a good read. It shows you small towns are having the most difficulty.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the resources go elsewhere.
Very well aware.
Right?
Yeah.
So it's really describing Millville's challenges uh, generally in terms of state aid keeps going down and all that, you know.
To validate our suffering.
That's right.
Perfect.
And, and talking about this, I did make mention to Peter, um, and this kind of goes back to Rachel's point earlier in payroll and stuff. It does seem as though there is a bit of inconsistency in understanding on how payroll works and how folks should be paid amongst the boards and not that anybody's really wrong, but it doesn't seem consistent. Have we ever thought about doing a payroll software here? And maybe automating some of it and maybe reducing the amount of labor hours spent on processing payroll? Because right now.
Come up with, when I, to me, but I mean, we're all.
Well, I was just wondering if that was something maybe we should look at.
I'm open to it. Peter, what is your?
Yeah, no, and we've talked about it. We, it's something to look at. I don't know that it's something to change right away, um, given how we staff it. Um, and there are ramifications because yeah, you got a fire department with very complicated earnings situations. You have a police force with the, a variety of rates of pay for different things depending on education and shifts and things like that. Um, so that's on the dance card, but probably not immediate is the way I would describe it. Um, because we have to wrestle with those union challenges too. As, I, 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 I will say, I don't, I don't believe anybody's misappropriating payroll or necessarily misrepresenting their earning thing. I, I wouldn't go there. We've, we've looked at a few things where some might have thought that and haven't found any, you know, misappropriation, if you will, um, in that situation. Uh, but it is a, a bit obtuse, but again, it's complicated. Some of these departments are very complicated. So how you fit that into a software, um, that fits all is not the easiest thing. And we might actually have to hire some outside experts in that type of thing to get it into a municipality that has a fire department with sixty-seven ways to make money and a police department with at least eight ways to make money. And then a highway with, is it snow and ice? Is it day shift and the, that sort of thing, you know? The rest of them, there are two, there are sal, there's salary people and then there's a handful of other hourly's.
So what I'm, I'm thinking it more for, I guess, um, improving and digitizing our processes so that they're mainstreamed. And yeah, you can upload those rules into the software where if you have folks swipe in at the police department, there's, there's clear rules and the chief would have the ability to, to edit those electronically. But the nice thing is, is that your, your town hall staff will be able to pull those reports and be able to process it relatively quickly because they're already prepared. Rather than going through paper sheets and looking at timesheets and trying to file them. And then you can always pull reports and recall timestamps and. So I, I was just thinking that, you know, maybe we look at auditing the processes and um, reducing chances for human error. Because it, it just seems to me like different boards had different understandings and, you know, I don't want to call anybody out, you know, but I do payroll a little bit differently here and my understanding of the law is, is that after forty hours, it's overtime.
Correct.
So if you have somebody that's working that, you can't just say, well, I'm pulling it from this bucket. I'm going to give you this rate of money. And it doesn't really equate to time and a half. So, you know, I saw some of that happening and that's why I made some of the changes I did. And it's painful because it's the right thing to do, but at the same time, um, it does impact your payroll. And is everybody else doing the same thing? So, no, I just, um, it, it might actually mitigate some of the liability for the town. I, I don't know. I, I just thought it might be something for us to look at. So what do you think? We'll uh, move on?
Sounds good.
You want a, want a water?
Water, yeah.
It's your favorite thing.
It sure is. Um, yeah, so at, at last, we have approval from DEP.
Yay.
That our operators do for sleeving the very clean well that had acid wash and all that stuff that has taken place. So with the sleeving, they, part of their efforts in the acid wash was to see where the sources of water are. And they've, you know, discovered or identified a, a seam at twenty-four feet that's providing water and they tested it separately from the general water in the whole well and discovered low and behold, that's where the source, there's a source of higher levels of total organic carbons, TOCs, which we've been hearing time and time again, the TOCs are a challenge and, and, and really part of the reason why we have disinfection byproducts because they can't manage the high levels of TOCs. So the sleeving effort is a way to seal off, it's a seal basically. Um, that's going to go down a hundred feet and DEP approved that as of Friday last, last week. It had taken some time. At one point, they weren't going to approve it. They had issues with it and so forth. Um, but um, cooler heads prevailed and smarter heads prevailed. And so that process, that sleeve, um, seal, um, is expected to come in and possibly be installed this week. Then it's up to DEP when the well can be, you know, and the well pump and the tubing goes down and it's all new tubing. And then they can turn the well on and then it's a question of when to, what to do next, whether to keep on bulk water, to immediately go to pilot testing. I, I think they ought to do some regular system operation as a baseline to compare the pilot test results to. So I've made that known to DEP and the operator, but that just comes from my, I have background science and you, you, you want to compare what you do. If you've got something new, you better make sure it's uh, improved over what you have. And reality is our results consistently uh, of, of the system without the pile, without the new technology, we really have a baseline from twenty-one, twenty-two because all the stuff that's gone on in the last several years has not provided a consistent operation of the system. So that's why, if, it, it depends on DEP. Whatever they're happy with, that's the way it will roll.
That's what we will do.
Right? So, but it's a question for them to struggle with, I think.
When is this leaving going to be done?
Possibly this week. I'm told this week, but I wouldn't bet on it.
And we're thinking the quality of water may improve because there's an artery.
Absolutely, yes. And, and the wells completely, that's the cleanest the well's ever been. The tank's completely clean. All the piping's clean. The pump has been refurbished and tested to make sure it operates right and cleaned. And then you get the sealing around down to a hundred feet to prevent this TOC laden water from getting in. They're going to have better water coming out of the, out of the well into the system as it exists before even turning on the new technology. So there'll be some, you know, obviously DEP will have some testing to be done with all this stuff going in. Um, and they're, they're going to make the calls as to when, you know, the system can be used and when the new technology can be used. That's, that's where we're at.
And you, you gave the beavers a stern, a stern talking to?
They, 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 they've been gone for years.
Yeah, I don't think they're there anymore. I took, I walk around there sometimes and.
They're not around.
No, they're not there.
I don't, I don't see anything.
And I had beaver experts in and the, the water's too shallow anyway, you know, the beavers go.
Any deeper water.
They're in Mansfield Pond is where they are.
Oh.
That's where they moved to.
All right.
So the only other thing I have on water is um, the superintendent requested an update for Thursday. So I'm going to call Karen and Chris tomorrow. I'll put together a write-up. I'll circulate between three of us and Karen and Chris and then once we agree, then I'll send that over to Jill for the meeting on Thursday.
You're the best.
And I sent you some info that might help that.
Okay, perfect. Great.
Cool. High school building project update. Do we really want to talk about this?
Well, you guys wanted it on your recurring agenda as a recurring agenda item. There it is. And they did have a meeting, so.
I missed the meeting, but I saw, there's another meeting, I think, that's, uh, so I don't know what Rachel has because I don't know if she went. I did not go to the meeting October twenty-ninth. I couldn't go. Um, I went to the one before that where they talked about having a public forum update that has been scheduled. It's a week from today at six o'clock at the high school. Is that right, Rachel? In the cafeteria at the high school?
Yes, it should be.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So I don't know. I was going to try to go to that. I don't know if anyone else is going, if it's more than me and one other person, then we should probably post a meeting.
Next Monday?
It's a week from today at six PM.
Oh, it just sounds like so much fun.
I think we should go and listen. I mean, this could be like a two hundred million dollar cost to us. Well, to the, you know, the two towns. I mean, it's not insignificant. So I thought we should take a peek.
That's a bargain. Lexington's is six fifty.
So I know someone who lives in Boston and his um, daughter, they just built a school and it was in like twenty-two or twenty-three in Boston, in Chinatown, two hundred million dollars. I'm like, what? How did that happen?
Depends on the size, whatever.
So, I mean, it just, Boston, what? Anyway, so Rachel, I'm sorry. Over to you because if you went, did you go to the meeting on the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, I did. Um, and so, yeah, the meeting next week, just to stay on that, will be live broadcasted. Um, so people who can't be there in person should be able to view it, which is good. Um, so, but last meeting, uh, we had a change of project director and we now have someone named Vivian, uh, Varbadian. I said, I think I said that wrong. Um, and she was uh, put in, we were, we voted and she was put in as a strategic move, um, basically to help push for that yes vote for the school to be approved. Um, she has a lot of experience in doing this and getting towns to um, approve. Similar to what happened, um, the meeting before with the new senior project manager who also basically specializes in um, getting these projects approved by the townspeople. Um, so there was that and we discussed, um, basically since the previous MSBA um, submission was kind of like slightly withdrawn and we chose to review it again. Um, I think the timeline has been pushed out slightly, but it's not going to affect the overall cost at all of um, this initial project idea. Um, so in December, we will be um, having re-submissions. Um, and. Um, and so that's important. And then, yeah, a lot of it was just focused on making sure, so we went over some preliminary redesigns and so rooms are getting smaller in some areas and different like uh, restructuring of like floors, so certain like classrooms will be set up differently than the original design and that should be cheaper. Um, and more importantly aligned with what the M S B A's um view for our educational needs is. That was one of the main reasons the M S B A turned us away. Uh, but it should be cheaper, which is really good. Um, we don't have the figures yet on the cost of that unfortunately. That should be coming up soon. Um, and you know, a lot of it's also focused on just getting people to be informed and general outreach. We're forming like a sub um, committee group to put together materials for public outreach and I'm hoping that I can join that, so that'd be great. Um, I'd love to do that. And also for remaining, making sure that our facts and the way we present to the public remains neutral. So neither for nor against the school building. Um, and making sure that we tend to just not sway people in either direction and that they can make up their minds on their own. Um, you know, so, yeah.
Alright.
So they do expect the cost to come down? They just haven't given that new number?
Yeah, they haven't given that number yet. Um, that should be perhaps at the next meeting, but um, no definitive number yet.
Okay.
Are they still dealing with options that they're going to explain? Or have they fixed on a particular path? They're fixed.
So.
That Rachel will know for sure.
Just to clarify, I've, I lost, I can't keep track of it all.
So yeah, to clarify, um, the M S B A requires us to give a whole bunch of options. It's like twelve options of like, um, brand new school versus like doing the minimum repairs and uh, different segregations of um grade alignment basically. So the M S B A requires that through the report. However, the school committee has decided to go forth with really focusing on the seven through twelve grade alignment for a new building. Um, so that's the main focus and that's a lot of what people may see or hear. Um, but that was chosen to be the direction a couple of months ago by the school building committee. Um, and in almost unanimous vote, um, to have seven through twelve.
So then with the configuration of the school district, be the middle, the Hartnett School will be pre-K through six. And then this new building will be seven through twelve and they'll get rid of both elementary schools?
Um, so discussions with that is probably not because there was a lot of discussion around bathrooms actually and how for the younger grades, so tw- uh, second grade and under, I believe. They have to have specially designed bathrooms that are like shorter, um, for them. And so that would not be covered by the M S B A to do that. And so that would come out of our own pocket to retrofit the mid- the current middle school to be a pre, pre-K through uh, six. So it looks like we will have the um, Millville Elementary School be for the younger grades, middle school and then the high school, resulting in a three-building district. Um, and then J F K and that complex would probably come offline and become uh, some alternative like, um, you know, um. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I have one more question. So, because right now we have about one thousand four hundred and forty kids in the school district. And we can have eight hundred and forty at the middle school and we can have roughly four ninety-five at the um M E S. And then this school is gonna hold how many? Five hundred?
Uh, so the M S B A is looking that like, there will be around five hundred eighty kids for an estimate. But the committee and the engineers have predicted that there's actually gonna be an increase in population. So they are actually looking to cram more kids in that, um, just by the population size growing, like the student body growing.
Okay. Cause right now we have a fort- you know, rough and tough numbers, fourteen hundred. The math on four ninety-five, eight forty and five eighty is over nineteen hundred. So we're expecting more than five hundred kids? That seems unrealistic in my opinion. I don't know if anyone else has an opinion, but I think that's, on a percentage basis that's almost a thirty-three percent increase.
Yeah, so, um, there was a lot of discussion, um, quite a few months ago. Um, about that we are looking at apparently an increasing population.
Okay.
Um, and we're one of the few towns in all Massachusetts like our towns. Um, to actually have that typically they're having a decreasing population. But what the engineers say is that it's increasing and so, um, that may fill up and they're hoping for an influx of more students from um, other towns who are school choicing because they're going to basically look at a brand shiny new building and be like, ooh, I want my kids to go there and we get more school choice children. Um, but I mean, yeah.
Okay, well, I think for the information session, they need to really clarify all this because like one, to say that we've been in decline for like ten years and all of a sudden we're gonna bounce back seems odd. So I, I, and unlikely. So I'd, I'd like to see like what drove to those conclusions. To say kids make school choice in for a brand new school, I'll believe that. I don't know, it's gonna be five hundred kids though. Um, so anyway, okay. Thank you, Rachel.
Cool, thank you. Alright, moving along, departments. Quiet down out there.
We heard from the highway department.
That's right.
Yes, we did.
Ah, alright, since we're talking about departments, where are we with the fire audit? You had another meeting, I know, without me.
Yeah, yeah. So I met with uh, the actual staff person.
Yeah.
From uh, the state auditor's office, who's an attorney. And she had questions for me. She looked at information I had sent, you know, things like that. And so she's next gonna be speaking with the fire chief. She's gonna be speaking with the town accountant. I've coordinated, they introduced those folks to her. And she'll start that probably after the fifteenth is what she said of this month. And then towards the end, she'll then um, meet with you, Richard, to get your perspective and objectives. So she didn't set a date for you. So I think what we'll probably see is some draft of best practices is what she's gonna come forward with. And we'll get the review that and that's maybe the better time to, for her to meet with you. So anyway, they're, they're, they finally got to where they got, they're getting their hands dirty.
This is good. So my idea, and if anybody uh, is opposed to it, we get this document, it should be a draft. Um, there should be some research, some findings, some recommendations on there. And my experience with these things is typically, you know, we have to kind of answer them or we should answer them because it's gonna be a, a public document. The state has a, uh, an obligation to post this thing for public viewing. I was thinking of passing it off to the public safety committee. Cause we have a pretty small window and say, alright, you need a strategy, you gotta answer these questions. You know, here's the document, here are the findings.
Yeah.
And then come back to us and we take a vote to kind of, you know, accept or deny those suggestions. So that's my idea. I, originally I was hoping we'd have a document, a working one like December, but I mean, maybe that's too aggressive.
Yeah, she didn't, she, I, I couldn't tell you. It's taken them a long time. I mean, they, they've told us when we've met previously. We'd see like, I call it a scheduled request from an auditor type thing. And we hadn't seen that yet. So she's really working with what I proactively provided, what I would have asked for.
And we've, we've interacted with the top brass.
It's unbelievable.
It's crazy, it's crazy.
Yeah.
And uh, you, it, it is, it is something considering that these are the same folks that are in the news taking on the governor. Like, and they reach out to Little Millville. We, we've talked to Diane like, what, three times?
Yes.
Like I.
Are you famous? Are you guys famous now?
I feel special. I do.
They're very good dealing with us.
Humbling. Like she's um, she's a very smart individual, like.
Yeah, I, I like.
Like, it's, it's impressive, yeah.
Good.
It's like, I wanna work the hell, I wanna audit Millville. This is, this is awesome. But anyways, um, so uh, WEX program, we do wanna roll out?
Uh, so uh, that's in process of uh, you know, filling in the paperwork.
Sure.
Right? So folks have been, you've gotten it as the department head to identify.
I said the deputy Ryan, yeah.
Yeah, so that has to come in and the, so they'll have a list of who's what and and a little bit more contractual stuff to be done. So that, that's in process, yeah.
And we're thinking um, enterprise will circle back in like January?
Yeah, I think that's how they left it, right? And I think they were gonna talk to the folks and
Yeah.
may have already talked to you or will talk to you.
They haven't talked to me.
Highway vehicles and police and fire and figure out what makes best sense.
Cause I, well, I wanna get some things earmarked into the spring warrant if this, if there's asks. And we do have a possible grant for a backhoe loader.
You have fifteen grand, that's right.
Ten grand, fifteen grand for the new backhoe loader.
Nice.
Cause the one we do have, um, I don't know where it came from, but it should go.
Used.
I think it needs to go back to the Titanic where they found it because that thing is leaked.
I think we bought it in twenty eighteen.
And it was used, it had many years on it.
Seventeen. That was my first year on capital planning. We got the truck, the new truck and then the.
And the used loader. And that was like sixty grand or something, wasn't it?
At the time.
Well, I, I mean, a brand new loader is like, you know.
Quarter million bucks.
Quarter million bucks, so.
My god.
Oh, it's big stuff.
Oh, yeah. Fifteen grand is like, you know, the sales tax now. It's like a drop in the bucket, but I mean, yeah, I know this, this thing is like, yeah, it leaks from everywhere, so.
Well, it's eight years old and it's been, you know, probably sitting outside, right? So.
Maybe.
So.
We don't know where it came from to begin with. I still think it was sitting by the Titanic, but.
Could be.
So we got that going on. Um, do we talk about salt shit or no?
It's not on your agenda, there's no.
I was thinking departments, but I just didn't know if you had an update. Alright, we'll move on, public forum. Sit down, okay. There you go.
Too many people out there.
Announcements, if any.
They're clamoring for the microphone.
Yeah, I have some announcements, right? I even have uh, copies for you guys of the uh, it's really just, uh, cause I don't think it was in the package.
I feel fancy when Peter gives us these things. They're staple without a staple.
Yeah, those things are pretty impressive.
That's pretty cool.
I think that's pretty, that's like fancy uh, right there.
That's the uh, printer. Uh, so the library, they have story time every Tuesday, ten thirty to eleven thirty. Infants, toddlers, preschoolers are all welcome. On Monday, November seventeenth, next week at six P M, they have book and cook. So they say, stop by the library, choose a recipe to make from our Thanksgiving cookbook and bring it to the library to share with the others on the seventeenth, which I, I think means bring your dish to the library that you've cooked using the cookbook, right? That's pretty cool. Thursday, November twentieth at six thirty P M, there's a book club meeting at the Polish Hall. And this month's book is called The Dinner by Herman Cook. If anyone's interested in joining, send an email to librarian at millville ma dot org. So that's the library. Then there's a senior center calendar, which I know gets posted over there as well as on Facebook and so forth. You know, every Monday they have Zumba for seniors. Every Tuesday they have line dancing essentially. Um, and pitch and chair yoga. Every Wednesday they have hand, knee and foot. Um, then they also have other things, like on the tenth, they have a senior club meeting. On the seventeenth, they have share a pie day. On the twenty-fourth, they have craft class, a movie. It happened on Fifth Avenue and lunch, which is hot dogs and baked beans. Uh, uh, next, uh, tomorrow, they have B M R fall fling at the high school cafeteria and the bus leaves at two thirty P M with a five dollar bus donation. They have uh, a surprise lunch uh, this coming Thursday and they have bingo. They have painting on the thirteenth. Call Tina to register. They have ham and cheese lunch on the thirteenth. And they have a, a history of Millville schools at six P M. On the twentieth, they have a turkey lunch uh, and a C O A meeting. On Friday, the fourteenth, they go to Hobby Lobby and lunch at a Hibachi Grill and Supreme Buffet. Five dollar bus donation. So that's quite a lot of stuff going on by your little senior center. They also, Tina asked me to uh, make note that the, that B M R has a Thanksgiving feast. And all are welcome and it's on Wednesday, the nineteenth in the B M R cafeteria. Door open, doors open at five thirty, dinner served six to seven. And you need to call Tina at five oh eight 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 three three five two three to reserve your spot there. So that's uh, the announcements I have on that. I have one last announcement that is not in your fancy clip packet. Um, your fire chief is part in his data job with the forestry service. The, the folks of his group uh, was awarded the manual Carballo Excellence in Public Service Award by the state.
Wow.
Um, and uh, they were uh, the mass, he's part of Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation's wildfire wildfire crews. So um, during the two thousand twenty-four wa- wildfire season, they were recognized for their bravery, courage and selflessness in battling over six hundred and fifty wildfires burning over four thousand acres of Massachusetts wildlands last fall. So, and this says their training and professionalism kept the fires from destroying homes, properties and kept their community safe. So, you know, there's some pictures, there's gonna be some stuff officially coming out on the state website. But, you know, Roy's in the pictures, uh, right in the front with the folks that are being, that's a pretty cool award.
Nice.
Uh, the fire chief got, I think, so. That's my announcements, yeah.
Cool.
We'll have more.
And uh, we signed you up for line dancing. I wanna tell you till now.
Yeah, well.
Surprise.
I'm not one to dance, I'll just tell you that.
Alright, let's see, line activity, senior center correspondence.
Yeah, really nothing that isn't already covered in one of these other things here.
Uh, minutes, do we wanna approve those?
Yes.
Yep.
That would be good.
So I went, um, I didn't, I went through all the minutes over the weekend and I didn't see any major issues.
Okay.
Okay, so and I did go through and also notice, so Rachel wasn't here for April first and Joseph was not here for April twenty-second. So I'm gonna do three separate motions. So we'll do the one with everybody. So I'll make a motion to improve, approve the minutes from April eighth twenty, twenty-five, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five and May fifth, twenty twenty-five, looking.
Second.
Thank you.
Take a vote, Joe?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Rachel?
Aye.
Alright, there you have it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April first, twenty twenty-five.
Aye.
Second?
Oh, second, sorry. Jump ahead of you here, aye.
I'm an aye. Rachel?
She has abstained.
Aye.
No, you have to abstain because you weren't in the meeting.
Yeah, abstaining over there.
Although technically I'm told that she could approve it as a member of the board selection.
No, sorry. If you're comfortable, Rachel, you're, I, I thought you had to abstain if you were in the meeting. So it's up to you.
No, you're right. I should abstain if I wasn't there.
Okay.
And I will, I will, um, just to kind of double check everything here. Rachel, I don't think you had yet been elected on April first. Am I right on that?
So, yeah, in that situation, you could.
Yes.
Yeah, that's probably right. I don't remember what the day of the election was.
I don't remember. Yeah, so she wasn't even, she hadn't even been elected yet.
First, your meeting was on the second.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Alright, and then the last one where Joseph wasn't there was.
Slacker.
I know.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Second. And uh, Joe, you can't vote, but you're gonna abstain?
I will abstain.
Jen?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Rachel?
Aye.
Okay, we'll allow it. Don't let it happen again.
Here are the signature pages then.
Ah, now we're gonna sign things?
Yeah, well, they have to go to the town clerk and she posts them. And people get to read them.
Yeah, don't let it happen again.
It's just the way it works, Richard. It's town government. It's, it's the job you're paid for, selectmen. We never did discuss. Why you earn your raise?
I was gonna say, we never did discuss our raises during the budget today.
Yeah.
We are from the government and we are here to help you. Scary. We'll sign your name on your behalf. How's that?
Sure, thank you.
That's the one logistical challenge.
I am gonna take you up in your office, be me back to uh, snowplow, okay? There you go. Okay. There you go. Okay. Town administrator report.
Selectmen's report.
Oh, good. Yeah, I wanna hear from you anyways.
I got nothing to say. I said it all.
Do we have anything exciting? Joe?
Uh, well, a couple of quick things here.
That's enough.
Peter, I'm gonna correct you real quick. That, uh, library book and cook is two weeks from today. It's not next week.
Oh, okay.
So it is the seventeenth. Uh, I believe you said it was next week. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
He did do that. I noticed.
And, uh, you are accurate as far as the book and cook is concerned. You basically go to the library, you pick out a recipe, you make it. And then you bring it that night, um, to the library. Uh, also, uh, project on Main Street in front of the library. Um, uh, the repaving is complete. The crosswalks are up. You've got those fancy crosswalk lights there, up and ready to go. Um, just waiting for the electrician to come in and.
Wire them.
Wire it up and it will be good to go, but it looks nice, looks much better. And a guy who walks everywhere like myself, I'm very excited about it. And, uh, then I just wanna. Give, uh, give kudos out to, to Kevin Del Gizi, uh, and the highway department. Uh, I was up at Bandigan Park as well today. Uh, looks really nice. You, you would never know it was just, it kind of disappeared off the map for so long. It looks great. So that's, that's all I got.
If you tell them to shovel harder, they appreciate that.
Uh, I will. Maybe I will next time.
Anything you wanna add?
Yes, I guess, so, um. I was at the library for something and they were having a meeting and the trustees meeting was wrapping up. So I thought that one of us and, and it could be me, should try to get on their next agenda to maybe explain that warrant article from last year a little bit better. They seemed surprised about that. With the building. Um, so I don't know if we wanna have this as an agenda item for us to discuss first and then I can go if needed. But it was more, you know, I explained to them, like, I, we didn't want to do this. It's just like we could be in a budget situation.
It was an opportunity for restructuring and give a budget crisis.
So I don't know if we wanna have maybe that on agenda item for the seventeenth for more formal discussion. And then I'm happy to go to a meeting and, and, you know, talk to them and bring back their thoughts.
Sorry for trying to take your building.
Yeah. And then, uh, the other thing is to the chair of the capital planning committee, if you wanna schedule a capital planning meeting.
Yes, I know I saw that.
And if you wanna reorg, I will take the chair position again and then we can. Do another version of the capital plan. So then, uh.
Yeah, so we'll do that. I'll reach out, find out when folks are available. We do need additional members too from the community. Cause it's just us from the existing groups. It's finance.
Finance and planning.
Planning. Yeah.
Okay, and then we need.
Two community members?
Two community members. So, right, it's.
I think so. But we can still have a quorum with four. That's still.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's all I had.
Uh, Rachel, do you have anything you wanna add?
Nope.
Um, I had mentioned to you that I am headed off to the Aggie on November thirteenth, so. Uh, for those of you that are not aware, um, in speaking with the new director of their Agmech program, they're trying to revamp and restructure. Some of their curriculum, we have longer classrooms. They want some feedback from the community. So there's kind of like a board of directors meeting. So I got a formal invite. And then, uh, I asked if, um, the chair of Blackstone can come with me. So, um, we're gonna head over on November thirteenth, so.
Nice.
Trying to get, uh, a few community projects, um, on their list to do, possibly a street sweeper, maybe a little bit of painting and buffing. So we'll see how that goes. So I'll let you know. All right, town administrator, you had nothing to add?
Sorry, I got one more thing I, I forgot to mention. Um, also, the, uh, the young lady that works at Georgia's variety, her name is Brenda. She's looking to put like a Thanksgiving basket together.
Sure.
For somebody that really needs it, for somebody that really needs it. Um, so I told her I would mention it tonight. I'm gonna get an email out to Tina Cook this week. Um, see if she's got anybody in mind, but anybody listening or watching at home. I know we've got. Tens and thousands of people in our audience right now watching. If you know somebody that's really in need, go see Brenda. She usually works the afternoons at Georgia's during the week.
It's good timing too.
Yes.
All right, item's not reasonably anticipated, forty-eight hours prior to the meeting.
Nothing.
Not, I see nothing. Okay, next regular meeting is owing to be Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Be here, be square.
Yep.
Okay. Which is, uh, which is what time in your time zone?
Eleven.
Uh, about eleven.
Eleven P M, ugh. All right, I'll make a motion to, well, make a motion, what time did anyways? Seven seventeen to enter an executive session by roll call if needed. We're doing all of these, Peter?
Yes.
Okay. A, move that the board of selectmen enter into an executive session to comply with or act under authority of any general law, specifically mass general law, chapter thirty A. Subsection twenty-one F and G to review assorted executive session minutes. Um. B, move that the board of selectmen enter an executive session per M G L, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A two. To discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions. Or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And C, move that the board of selectmen enter an executive session per, uh, mass general law, chapter thirty A, subsection. Twenty-one A three to discuss strategy respective collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the bargaining or litigating position of the town and the chair so declares. Fire fired as Teamsters Union Local one seventy. Only returning to open session to adjourn. So I guess I need a second, right?
Second.
Take a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Rachel? I'm not Rachel, Jennifer.
Aye.
I'm an aye. Rachel?
Aye.
You know, I was thinking like, don't forget Rachel. Don't forget Rachel.
Well, you know what's funny? When I used to play games when I was little, my pretend name was always Rachel.